All right. Good morning and welcome, everybody. Today is Tuesday, March 8th. It's 9:00 a.m., so we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll ask folks who are with us if you're both willing and able to stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Today, we will have the invocation delivered by Pastor Debbie Garrett, who I believe is here. Welcome, Pastor.
Thank you. Thank you. Let us bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we are gathered here today to say thank you. Thank you for watching over us last night and allowing us to arise this morning, fully clothed and in our right minds. Father, today, we lift up to you the City Council leaders of Wichita, along with our Mayor Brandon Whipple. It is our prayer that they work together with all integrity and transparency as they serve the communities that each represent. Search now their hearts, Lord, and remove all bitterness, resentment, and unforgiveness from them so that they may effectively serve, bless and protect them and their families from all evil. Father, we ask that you place a hedge of protection around our Police Chief, Gordon Ramsey. We ask for provisions and traveling mercies as he returns home. Protect our police officers and their families and all our medical teams as they put their lives on the line to keep our communities safe. We pray for a hedge of protection around our children and youth as they prepare for the spring break of 2022. And now, Lord, we ask that you help us to remember the less fortunate, the poor, those struggling with mental illness, and the homeless in our communities. In Jesus' mighty name, I pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) Republicans, we're just saying, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Madam Clerk.
Approval of the minutes of the en banc meeting on February 24th, 2022, and the regular meeting on March 1st, 2022.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, then I will make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second? Motion is for second by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk will open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever receive seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Proclamation, Women in Construction Week.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for the Women in Construction Week, please make your way to the front. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, the Greater Wichita, Kansas, Chapter 120 has distinguished itself for 56 years as a voice of women in construction in Wichita. And whereas, the work done by the Greater Wichita, Kansas, Chapter Number 120 has benefited Wichita through community development and educational opportunities. And whereas, the Greater Wichita, Kansas, Chapter Number 120 has unceasingly promoted and promoted the employment and advancement of women in the construction industry. And whereas, the construction community represented by the Greater Wichita, Kansas, Chapter Number 120 has been a driving force in fostering community development through renovation and beautification projects, promotion of skilled trades, careers, and a positive vision of the future. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim that we can march 6th through the 12th, 2020, as Women in Construction Week in the City of Wichita and congratulate the organization on its many accomplishments. You good?
Thank you.[443.19][443.19](Applause)
Madam Clerk.
Women's Appreciation Day.
If you're here to accept the proclamation for Women's Appreciation Day, please make your way to the front. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870. Whereas, March is the annual declared month that observes, recognizes, and encourages the study of the vital role women have had in our economic, political, and societal success in our country. Whereas, Wichita has profound women serving the community in many industries from various backgrounds, working to make the city a more desirable place for people of all walks of life, as well tackling significant challenges that will provide more opportunity for current and future Wichitaans. Whereas, many women who work and live in the City of Wichita represent our community each year during the Miss Kansas Competition Weekend, June, to bring awareness to critical challenges facing our community, earn scholarship monies to continue their education, and serve as role models to young women and men across the city. And whereas, the City of Wichita recognizes the value and dignity of everyone as a commitment to underscore the need to create a global economy, workforce, and cities striving for equitable policies which meets the needs of all citizens to include women in our evolving society. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim May 19th, 2022, as Women's Appreciation Day in the City of Wichita and encourage all citizens to remember the contributions of women and the Miss America and Miss Kansas Organizations.
Thank you, Mayor Whipple, Vice Mayor Tuttle, and the members of the City Council. It is an honor to be in a city that is committed to empowering women and providing a platform where our voices can be heard, leadership respected, and contributions honored. The Miss America Organization is the largest scholarship provider for women in the world. Because of this organization, women like me are able to receive their education and strengthen our workforce and local economy. Now, more than ever, with unprecedented labor shortages and other challenges caused by COVID-19, providing diverse pathways for talent to receive and education is critical. I hope that each of you will join us on March 19th at the Evergreen Community Center and Library to support strong women-owned businesses, celebrate the various organizations working to create a welcoming community for women, and spend dollars to help boost our local economy. I look forward to representing this great city at the 2022 Miss Kansas Competition. Gears to preparing great women for the world and the world for great women. Again, thank you.[649.66][649.66](Applause)
Madam Clerk.
Presentation, Ukraine Resolution.
If you're here to receive the resolution concerning Ukraine, please make your way forward. So last week, the City Council passed a resolution with a 7-2-0 vote condemning the invasion of Ukraine. And today, it's with great joy that we can present this resolution to two folks here who are living in Wichita and are from the Ukraine. So thank you both on short notice for joining us today, and I will read the resolution. "A Resolution of the Governing Body of the City of Wichita Regarding Ukraine. Whereas, Wichita is a diverse and vibrant community that many Ukrainians and Ukrainian-Americans who contribute much to our city call home. And whereas, Ukraine is an independent nation that is free to choose its own leaders and forge its own destiny, now faces an unjustified and illegal war of aggression that threatens its solvency, safety, and way of life. And whereas, the people of Wichita stand for the values of freedom and justice for all, especially in a face of tyranny and aggression. And therefore, be it resolved that the City of Wichita commends the courage, resolve, and strength of the Ukrainian people in their pursuit of freedom, and further that we pay tribute to the brave men and women of Ukraine who gave their lives and hope that those who fight alongside them and those who come after them may live in a secure, safe, and democratic and independent Ukraine. Be it further resolved that the City of Wichita condemns the illegal military invasion of Ukraine and the violence that it has caused, and that the City of Wichita affirms its unwavering support for our Wichita neighbors of Ukrainian descent, as well as their friends and their family abroad. As a symbolic gesture of support for the Ukraine's right to freedom, justice, and the pursuit of happiness, we hereby direct the City Manager to turn City Hall lights to yellow and blue, the national colors of Ukraine, adopted by the City Council of the City of Wichita this first day of March, 2020. It has been signed by all members of the City Council."
I would like to say thank you for all American people for supporting us, for praying with us, for crying with us. It means a lot for my people, and thank you.[837.01][837.01](Applause)
I would like to also express appreciation and gratefulness on behalf of all Ukrainian people that are struggling right now because the support that Americans show and all what you do for us means a lot. Thank you.[857.13][857.13](Applause)
And just a quick thank you to the folks who received the Ukrainian resolution. One of them came in last week with a cake she made and showing appreciation for us, lighting up the lights here in the yellow and blue for Ukrainian colors. So we appreciate that gesture as well. And the other young woman who was with us actually shadowed us last, I think just a few months ago, and is a high school student here from Ukraine and very interested even then in not only the political process of the Ukraine, but also about learning more about our style of democracy and freedom here so that she could go back and be a better public servant in her country. I can't imagine what you both are going through, knowing that, you know, you're so far away from your friends and family and have to see this online, and just know that you are Wichitaans and we do support you and we stand with you. And again, thank you for being here today to be recipients of this very small gesture from our city government. Thank you. Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you for the point of privilege. I just wanted to recognize that I have a student who's shadowing me today, Christopher Henry. He's a senior at Collegiate, one of our brightest. He's also a constituent, and he's going to be shadowing me for a couple weeks. But again, it's just heartwarming to see that young Wichitaans want to learn more about our government, want to learn more about our city, and hopefully, this is a way that we can anchor young talent in our community. So thank you and welcome, Christopher.
Christopher, why don't you stand up so we can clap?[992.13][992.13](Applause) Madam Clerk.
Public Agenda, Celeste Resett, Transparency and Accountability to Taxpayers.
All right, we're going to roll into our public agenda. If you're on a list and haven't been here before, then please remember to say your name and also your address, if you are comfortable. We ask folks to stay within five minutes. Of course, I don't shut people off if you're continuing your thought, but we do ask that we be courteous of everyone's time. So with that, Celeste, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Celeste Resett, Wichita native and founder of Say Century Two, a nonpartisan group that circulated a petition to garner the right to vote on the future of our historic public buildings, particularly in the Century District downtown. Last week, five of you voted against private management of the golf courses. I applaud you. And I also thank you for asking for public survey results. The survey results for Century Two privatization showed overwhelming support to keep it public, but those results were kept hidden. So I applaud the City Council for moving in a better direction with more transparency. I'm so thrilled. But also, last week, one of you said, and I quote, "Private businesses are much more efficient than government." I don't buy that. The key to efficiency is effective leadership and qualified staff. I saw efficiency in both private business and government entities that I worked for during my 25-year career. So why do you think city government here is inefficient? Let's look at your leadership. Was it effective? Are decisions accountable and transparent to the Wichita taxpayer? First, you gave management of the Striker Sports Complex to the Sports Forum without any bids and with no request for proposal. The Sedgwick County Soccer Association, the nonprofit soccer league, was pushed out of existence. No bid, no RFP. That is not efficient. Second, you hired consultants to determine revenue estimates on the new ball stadium, but then you allowed staff to manipulate the consultant's numbers. Staff's revenue estimates were wildly overstated, and debt payments now have to be paid from other revenue sources. City staff got a nice raise and praise for a job well done, but they had missed targets like overstated revenues, which should have been noted on their performance reviews. Third, the contract for the Wichita Ice Rink specified monthly loan payments from Brandon and Rodney Stephen to repay a $3.25 million loan. Contract terms were not enforced, and now the city is owed nearly half a million in past due loan payments. You should have ended this contract years ago for noncompliance. The contract, however, wasn't renewed in January, thank heavens. And yet, Genesis Gyms still operates in the Wichita Ice Rink. I was stunned to learn this. They collect gym fees and get revenues from the second-floor Pucks Bar without a contract. Do they pay rent or utilities? And why are they still advertising on the Kellogg billboard? Why haven't you evicted them? And why are they operating without a contract? What an unusual sweetheart deal. Fourth, the restriction on company and LC campaign contributions to your reelection and election campaigns was changed without input from voters. Let me give you some input. Change it back. You are taking money from the very same businesses that are allowed to operate in our public facilities without a contract and rent-free owing us money. Put campaign donation restrictions back into place this year. Fifth, why doesn't every private management contract require cost-benefit analysis? Finance staff should be more than capable to prepare a five-year cost-benefit analysis for proposed management contracts. Include an estimate of fees based on ticket prices, operating expenses, and gross revenue or net revenue percentages, whatever they're putting in the contract. Sixth, why haven't you improved the city's web search function? It was broken for days. We all agreed last year the search function needed to be updated. How long does it take to fix? Seventh, in September, you approved a private management contract for Century Two, and 17 positions were eliminated. Section 6.5 of the contract called pre-existing conditions lets ASM off the hook for any repairs to Century Two that were present in January when they took over. I was promised a copy of this report. I still don't have that report. Is this transparency? Now let's look at staff. In budget meetings last year, taxpayers were told that ARPA funds were going to be used to fill vacant staff positions. But last week, we learned that nearly $4 million this year and $2 million from last year has not been used to rehire staff. Why? Are water department positions filled for mainline and bank backflow services? Do we have sufficient laborers, operators, and supervisors? Have we hired internal auditing staff? Do we have sufficient staff in the forestry department? The city only has two employees for handling irrigation testing and repair. So I'm going to end by saying, look at A Price Woodard Park and tell me if you are proud of this eyesore named in honor of Wichita's first black mayor. Here's a flyer showing our own grassroots volunteer effort to renovate this park in time for the 50th River Festival Parade, something the city should be proud of, and we're asking for volunteers to help. You are more than welcome to join us, and I will stand for questions.
There's no questions.
All right. Thank you.
Sam Manager, what is the status of the Genesis Health Club at this point and the funds that they do owe us? Because not only, and I understand a previous speaker had a list of different items, but that's one that's come up quite a bit. So I'd love to get an update on that. And then, of course, we can meet with the previous speaker anytime and go over the other issues.
Mayor, we have been negotiating with Genesis on payment for outstanding obligation, and we have a meeting this week to hopefully bring conclusion to that. And then, at that point, we'll make a determination regarding Genesis' presence or lack of presence in the Ice Center.
So are they just, they're free to operate in a building until we're able to get payment?
Right, but they'll still owe us rent for the period of time that they're in there.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
George Theo Harris, Untie Our Hands.
George Theo Harris, 2115 South Chautauqua, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Legal. Untie our hands. I want to start by acknowledging that on this date, 65 years ago, our beloved Carl Brewer was born. He and I are both 1957 babies, with him being 10 days my senior. I want us to remember that, that he'd be 65 today. This is going to be a tough segue, but here I go. My wife and stepson both stated that on January, my January talk before you, I had my late father's Marlboro jacket and a KU stocking cap, and I looked like a bum. Well, now I come before you, looking more professional, tying all. Yet, the old saying comes to mind. You can dress up a pig, but at the end of the day, all you have is a dressed-up pig. Hopefully, my context is what you will be judging me on. It will take appropriate action on them and not my appearance. Subject, porch pirates. On Next Door, there was a mention of porch pirates by a neighbor with over 850 likes. There is a desire by most voting citizens that enough is enough. We want help with rooting out these thieves. Myself, I have been hit twice, and this just has to stop. The following was put on Next Door by me, and I took it down after I received 85 likes, but also a few slams for not taking other measures. We could be part of the solution or sit by and watch and hear about it happening again and again on Next Door. I plan on partnering with this City Council, Jim Howell, Acting Police Chief Moore, Sheriff Easter, the DA, State Senator Mike Peterson, House Representative Ron Estes, and more importantly, FedEx, UPS, USPS, and Amazon officials to get resolve to this epidemic problem plaguing our neighborhoods. This behavior has to stop, and porch pirates need to be put back out to sea. Now on to our properties and neighborhoods that are just becoming less and less desirable due to the clutter and inoperative vehicles. Our inner city is becoming dangerous and less safe day by day. The City Council, police, and M-A-B-C-D need to step up and help turn this around and untie our hands. I have an exit plan, but some are not as fortunate as I am with this. I'm not gone. I'm not gone yet, though. I want to say this loud and clear. I'll say it again. I want to say this loud and clear. It is not my intention to impact citizens who can't afford to do so, or the elderly, or physically disabled people, but to help them know there's help at M-A-B-C-D to help get their property clear of debris in inoperative cars. Inoperative cars, expired tags, flat tires, and other conditions, which makes it illegal to get in the vehicle and drive it down the street. Currently, used cars are selling at a premium, so there is no time like now to do some spring cleaning and rid our neighborhood of these eyesores. The Fourth Amendment reads, "The right of the people to secure in their persons houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable search and seizures shall not be violated, and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause, etc." Does probable cause equate to a neighbor willing to state a vehicle hasn't moved in far excess of the 72 hours, which is the current ordinance? We're talking about weeks, months, and years, not 72 hours. John Buck will speak in a few minutes, and he will be much more eloquent and elaborate better than I with pictures. Thank you for that, Karen. P.S. Whatever happened to the inspector asking the person with said in-op to get their key and start said operational vehicle, this used to be the way to root out the fibers. It is really against the law, is it really against the law, when the inspector walks to knock on the offending neighbor's door? And yes, it is offensive for us to have to look at these inops, to take a peek at these tags to see if they're current. Is it a good idea for the inspector to tell the offending party to repair the tires or put a car cover over in an operative vehicle to hide the fact that it is in-op? We need changes and help, and I hope you guys are there for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did my wife tie these a little too tight?
Madam Clerk.
Sean Straney, Partnerships with Ukraine.
Morning, and welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Council. Kind of new at this, so like Joe Dirt says, I'm new. I don't know what to do. When I think of Wichita, three things come to mind. Air capital. Believe it or not, coffee, just because of spice merchant company, which I love. And in Wichita, I, excuse me, I've always believed... And in Wichita, I, excuse me, I've always believed that found the very best of human decency. I've been writing on and off to people in Ukraine for about eighteen years. The past three years solidly with several people. They remind me of Wichita. They're honest, hardworking, good-hearted, salt-of-the-earth people. My girlfriend is a nurse in Kiev. You know, every day, I wonder if I'm going to hear from her again before she can escape. She doesn't want to leave because, well, she wants to perform her nursing duties on people fighting there. But one of the things that she told me one time is that there's kind of a joke with Lviv, Ukraine, that their soil is made of coffee. I was thinking about Spice Merchant Company. So, what I wanted to propose was that Wichita and Lviv, Ukraine become sister cities. And, you know, a sister city is a longer relationship than the here and now. The here and now, we're showing solidarity with Ukraine, but in the long term, I think there's a lot of benefits also. It's an opportunity for the smaller coffee merchants to be able to open up a new market with Ukraine, like Spice Merchant Company, Scooters, El Primo Cafe, some of our best coffee we have. It also can open up further avenues between Wichita State University and Ivan Franco National Ukraine University in Lviv. We can have an exchange of professors, especially in the arts field, mostly history and language. We can have Ukrainian professors come teach Ukraine at Wichita State. Our professors teach English over in Ukraine. In history, while our professors go and teach American history in Ukraine, they can have access to important primary source archives, which, as I'm finishing my master's in military history, is invaluable research. Ukrainian professors that want to come over here and teach history of Ukraine, they can go up to Leavenworth, to the public library at the General Staff and College, learn military history. They can go to the Truman, or, well, yeah, the Truman Library and the Eisenhower Library to do research on American history. The research alone, being able to exchange professors, is invaluable. Not only that, but it also affords more opportunities for exchange of students. College students between Wichita State University and Ivan Franco National Ukraine University, but also on the high school level. We can set up foreign exchange students, learn more about each other's cultures. We have a lot in common. The national flower of Ukraine is a sunflower. What is our state flower of Kansas? And it also has even a greater cultural significance that they can share with us about the sunflower. Traditional women's headdresses and crowns from back in the days of Prince Vladimir I were adorned with sunflowers. Also, we both have wheat in common. Ukraine provides, I think, I looked it up, like thirteen percent of the world's wheat. Kansas, we have wheat. We can also therefore bring about agricultural exchanges. We can teach them maybe about milo as an alternative crop, as a way of rotating their crops. They can bring other breeds of their wheat to us to help our farmers improve breeds through crossbreeding. I think there's a lot of opportunities, not just in the short term for solidarity, but in the long term, moving forward, if we become sister cities with Lviv, Ukraine. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for being here. Next speaker.
John Buck, Double Homicide in Southeast Wichita, District Three.
Mr. Buck here. There he is.
Thank you for giving me your time today, I appreciate it. My name is John Buck. I was hoping to get through this without my reading glasses. That's not going to happen. I am a resident of Meade Neighborhood in South Central Wichita, District Three. I'm a past president of the Meade Neighborhood Association, and I live at 2029 South Erie in Wichita. I'm here today specifically to address the issue of property code violations. Section 6-27 of Cedric County Code Regarding Enforcement says, quote, "The Metropolitan Area Building and Construction Department, MABCD, is hereby authorized to enforce the Wichita-Cedric County Unified Building and Trade Code and all related functions set forth and defined therein within the incorporated confines of the City of Wichita." These are the people that we count on to uphold this code, to investigate our concerns and take action on those property owners whose properties do not meet the unified code. On February 14th of this year, a man and a woman were shot and killed at a property located less than a block from my home. The property where this incident took place has been the subject of numerous complaints with MABCD and the Wichita Police Department for over the past four years. Currently, people occupying this property are not the owners. When I spoke to the owner of the property, they said they wanted these people to leave. The owner's other property in the area has also been subject to numerous complaints over the years for inoperative vehicles deteriorating in the driveway. There have been court orders, there have been fines assessed, but no lasting improvement on their properties. The system hasn't worked. My purpose for being here today is to bring to your attention the level of frustration and difficulty our neighborhoods are having with various properties in the area, and our ability or inability to get action from the city, the police department, and MABCD to correct them. The information you were just handed includes photographs of various properties within Meade Neighborhood. Each of these have been subject to complaints filed with MABCD. Each of these, in, I'm sorry, each of these has been the subject of multiple complaints filed with MABCD by myself and others in the neighborhood over the condition and safety of these properties. On each page, you'll see a set of photographs. These images come from Google Maps Street View. Below the image, you'll see the date Google attributes to the image. As you can see from the photographs, Meade Neighborhood is currently in a state of decline. I want your help in reversing that. The inspectors for MABCD claim that they are not able to take action on our complaints. When I've asked MABCD inspectors why bad properties cannot be mitigated, the answer is always the same. We need to follow the process. Ladies and gentlemen, the process is broken. The process is broken from the start. I've been told by MABCD inspectors, they can only write up violations they can see from the street. They tell us they cannot go onto the property. According to the Building Code, Section 18 dot 40 dot 050, Regarding Unsafe Properties, the code states, quote, "For the purpose of making such inspection, the superintendent of central inspection or his designated representative is hereby authorized to enter, examine, and survey at any reasonable time all structures and premises. The owner, agent, and occupant of every structure shall give the superintendent of central inspection or his designated representative free access to such structure and its premises at all reasonable times for the purpose of such inspection, examination, and survey," unquote. Yet, MABCD inspectors tell us they cannot go on the property, and they claim the need for probable cause. Now, the definition of probable cause, at least in my understanding, is that an officer of the city, which would include MABCD inspectors, can go onto a property if they honestly believe there is a violation. I would think that numerous complaints from the adjoining and nearby property owners would constitute probable cause. My call to action for this council, I would appreciate the council directing city staff to create a set of guidelines for neighborhoods to follow in order to provide enough information for city officials and MABCD to have probable cause when it comes to nuisance properties in our area. A clear set of requirements that we can use to effect change and keep our neighborhoods safe. I recommend these guidelines be distributed to the Wichita Independent Neighborhood Associations for their use and education. This issue is not limited to Meade Neighborhood. This is an issue for the entire city. The county assessor says our property values are rising. Meanwhile, our sense of safety, our ability to build communities and take pride in our neighborhoods is falling. I ask for your help in creating a streamlined process for reversing this decline. On another note, just really quick, the Wichita Police Department used to send a data feed to the LexisNexis Crime Map, the community crime map. That hasn't been updated since April of 2021. I would like to see that data stream renewed. Thank you for your time today. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Blubog.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, can you remind me, didn't the former councilmember, Clint Denon, use some of his Hyatt funding for an initiative down in this area to kind of go after these type of issues?
Mayor, councilmember, yes, that is true. And we had some success in that regard. We not only cited violations, but we worked on voluntary compliance and actually received a high percentage of voluntary compliance when we issued flyers and notices to property owners. So, it was, I think, a successful pilot and one that we've talked about bringing back for discussion by the council during the budget for a little more intense code enforcement in other parts of the city.
When did that program end?
I'm going to, I believe it was last year. I believe we only funded it through a portion of 2021.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I think that was Hilltop, not me, where that pilot was at.
It was a significant, a portion of District Three, we actually expanded it.
Oh, okay.
Other comments? See none. Madam Clark.
Consent agenda items one through fourteen.
Does every member have a chance to review the consent agenda? If so, is there any discussion on consent agenda? If there is no discussion on consent agenda, thou make a motion to pass the consent agenda as it is presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle, Clerk open roll, members cast their vote. Ever received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clark.
Board of Bids and Contracts with Wichita Airport Authority Board of Bids and Contracts dated March 7th, 2022.
Good morning, Melinda Walker, Purchasing Manager. We have for engineering today, we have 2022, sorry, 2022 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program for PPJ Construction for $1,083,000. For SWD number 425 to serve Clear Creek Edition Phase Two, Apex Excavating for $947,825. Let's go back. Stormwater system, we have number 762 to reject all bids. Purchasing bids, we have the network hardware, we're deferring until March 21st. For the $37,000 GVWR refuse truck, Omaha Truck Center, for an aggregate total of $269,758. For airport pavement rehabilitation and wind cone replacement, defer to March 21st. And also for a caterpillar of 926 MHL Foley Equipment for $180,931.29. Our website to register to do business for the City of Wichita, our open request for proposals, and approve the recommendation.
Is there any discussion? See none. Is there input from the public on this? Discussion cut back to the bench. Is there any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, thou make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to receive and file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle, Clerk open roll, members cast their vote. Ever received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clark, if you could hold for one moment, I have received a couple of text messages from different councilmembers about wanting to take a picture of the council and our friends from Ukraine, so therefore, I will ask for a two-minute recess so that we can do that if there's no objection. See none. So, we will recess for two minutes so that we can take that picture that I should have took in the beginning of this meeting, and apologize, but I didn't have my phone on me. So, two-minute recess, and we'll go ahead and take that picture real quick with the All right, we have returned from recess. Madam Clark.
Public hearing for healthcare facilities revenue bonds Presbyterian Manners, Inc.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'm Tim Goodpasture with the City's Office of Economic Development for the record. The item before you today is a public hearing for Presbyterian Manners. Presbyterian Manners is a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, private not-for-profit headquartered here in Wichita. It is a provider of senior living care throughout Kansas and Missouri, and the city has acted as an issuer of bonds for Presbyterian Manners since 1990. The company is headquartered here in town at 2414 North Woodlawn, just north of 21st Street off of Woodlawn. They have fourteen senior living facilities in Kansas and Missouri. They have a large facility located at 4,700 West 13th Street North in Wichita. They have two hospice facilities in Kansas and Missouri, and is in the development stage on a facility in Colorado. The City of Wichita has acted as an issuer of bonds throughout the state of Kansas for Presbyterian Manners through a series of interlocal agreements. On September 14th of last year, the city council approved a letter of intent to issue healthcare facilities revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed $200 million. These proceeds would be used to refinance 2013 and 2014 bond issues to achieve an interest rate savings, as well as invest- rate savings as well as investing in new facilities throughout the state of Kansas, including 90 new independent living units in Wichita. The Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act governs the issuance of bonds for not-for-profit, tax-exempt bond issues and requires a public hearing. There are new regulations for Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act bond issues that require the identification of where bonds will be invested. This is normally not an issue because for most of the T E F R A hearings, we have therefore the city of Wichita, but because we are the issuer of bonds throughout the state of Kansas, it requires that we identify specifically where the bonds will be issued. So this public hearing is strictly a public hearing to identify where the bonds will be issued. We are not changing the dollar amount that Presbyterian Manners has requested. It is simply to identify specifically where the bonds will be issued to satisfy the T E F R A hearing. So new money projects will be issued in Arkansas City, Clay Center, Dodge City, Emporia, Fort Scott, Lawrence, Newton, Olathe, Parsons, Salina, Topeka, and Wichita. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that the city council close the public hearing. Bruce Shogren, who is the president and CEO of Presbyterian Manners, is here and can answer any questions specific to the company, and I would be happy to answer any questions as well.
Are there questions for staff? See none. Is there input from the public on this item? See, now we're bringing discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no discussion on this item, then the chair recognizes councilmember Johnson as a part, he is one of the districts in which this item falls into. So councilmember.
Thanks, Mayor. I would move that the city council close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk roll open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Audiovisual upgrades at various facilities.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Chris Sewell, Facilities Division Manager, Public Works and Utilities. This project before you is funded $500,000 general obligation bond. It is to upgrade the audiovisual systems at City Hall as well as five locations without the city districts. Those locations are Atwater Neighborhood Resource Center, Fire Station 21, Rockwell Branch Library, Alfred Branch Library, and the Water Center. These will bring these systems up to our current standards. And the sixth location, the Evergreen Neighborhood Resource Center, has already been upgraded as part of that project that recently completed. So this project will bring all locations up to a standard to where we'll hopefully stop having some of these microphone issues in the boardroom, as well as having remote meeting capabilities in all these DAB locations. With that, the staff recommends approving the project, adopting the bonding resolution, authorizing necessary signatures. I'll stand for any questions.
Are there questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? Is no input from the public, then we will bring the discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm excited about this weekend at our District One breakfast. We heard our screen was a little blurry from the projector, and sometimes we have sound issues, so I am excited to see all of those upgrades happen, and thank you all for bringing this to us.
Councilmember Holheisel.
I don't know if this was on purpose, but my speaker did happen to stop working halfway through the meeting today, so kudos to you guys for planting that, just to reaffirm the fact. But I am excited as well because we know around City Hall that we do need upgrades on a lot of the equipment, so thank you.
Councilmember Bluebog.
Thank you, Mayor. Hopefully, we can address some of the issues that have appeared to bench. I think the last time we improved it, it was worse, so I'm hoping to be able to hear the meetings appropriately.
Councilmember, I'm sorry, your mic was off the whole. I'm just kidding, just kidding.
Maybe we can get a switch to.
While we're doing the upgrades, could I get a switch to control the microphones as well up here by councilmember Johnson for a second bite of the apple?
Thanks, Mayor. Is that going to upgrade the manager's mic too?
On a serious note, this is going to really help us enhance our transparency and also build upon the success we've had trying to make lemonade out of lemons during COVID, where we've done more with our podcasts, more with our broadcasting capabilities, utilized our, our tech-savvy staff a bit more. So being able to give you all the tools you need so we could better communicate is a, is a great thing. So with that, I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the project, adopt the bonding resolution, authorize the necessary signatures, and I will give the floor to Vice Mayor Tuttle for a second, if she so desires.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk roll open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Chair recognizes the, excuse me, madam clerk.
Executive search firm services for chief of police.
Sorry, anytime the manager gets up makes me a little nervous. Welcome.
I'm sorry, I'm not here to talk about the budget today. Actually, as you know, we were in the process of searching for a new police chief, and we solicited proposals for a consultant to help us with that process. Issuing RFP in January, we sent information out to 35 vendors, and we received proposals from seven firms that are experienced with police chief and executive searches. Three of those firms were identified as finalists, excuse me. Yes, three of them were identified as finalists and were interviewed. We had a pretty robust discussion and review of the proposals. We had city staff, as we normally have on a selection committee, but we also had two city councilmembers participate as well as three community stakeholders. Committee examined and evaluated the proposals based on their content and their expertise, and then all the firms were ranked for their presentation as well as their content. After the selection process was complete, it was a unanimous recommendation of the committee that public sector search and consulting be selected to lead the police chief search. The, one of the reasons that this firm was selected is because of their extensive experience in police chief searches, especially for cities our size. Just in the last two years, they have successfully placed police chiefs in Raleigh, North Carolina, San Jose, California, Fort Lauderdale, Nashville, Tennessee, and Dallas, Texas. So we have a firm that is extremely qualified in that regard. Plus, they suggested a very robust community engagement process, both on the front end of the process, when we will be determining what the profile is for the ideal candidate, and also on the back end, when the finalists are selected and the community will have an opportunity to visit with those candidates, ask questions. And on the front end, before the profile is completed, there'll be a series of community forums and community focus groups, as well as surveys of police employees and a community survey. And on the back end, there'll be opportunities for small group as well as for large community The contract for this is $48,000 with expenses not to exceed $10,000, and that's why it's in front of you today for consideration. With that, oh, excuse me, the law department has prepared a contract with public sector search and consulting and is approved, has approved the contract by, to form. With that, recommend the selection of public sector search and consulting to provide executive search services for the chief of police position. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for staff. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. No questions, just some transparency. I served on that selection committee as well. In addition to what Bob just said, they were my top choice because of their, not only their expertise in finding chiefs, but their community engagement. That's one of the things I really cared about and liked about what we did last time. So I think this is a great opportunity for us with this company, and they definitely outlined some robust community engagement.
I also note, when you're picking a firm like this, you want someone who has extensive contacts in the police executive field, and this firm is considered one of the premier firms, one of the premier search firms, and they have a pretty significant pool of potential candidates, and it's about trying to get people who are not looking for a job to be interested in a position that's open here in Wichita.
Vice Mayor Tuttle.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Bob. Appreciate it. I just wanted to also state that I was the second councilmember who was representing on the search committee. Again, echoing what councilmember Johnson said, their community engagement process I thought was just really exemplary, but the thing that really, for me, was another key point was their customized timeline and the dedicated project management. And I made the comment during the review process that I would like for us to work with communications and this firm because they outlined such a great process that it'll be a way to keep the community engaged and informed. I know I'm getting lots of questions about where we are in the process. I'm sure my colleagues are as well, and so they almost laid out a media platform for us as well. So I appreciated being part of the committee. Just one more note, I was excited to select them. They were my first choice, but all seven were really qualified applicants, so we were fortunate to have such a great number of firms that could have served our city well, but I do believe this was the best, so thank you.
Vice Mayor, you mentioned something that I think we're all getting questions on process and how long it will take. The timeline that's proposed by public sector search and consulting is approximately five months, so, and that's partly because of the extensive engagement on both ends of the process. So I think it's, it's a little longer than we would maybe prefer. I will tell you, I think we have a very, very accomplished person in the interim position, so I'm confident we will make it through that, that period of time. But it's, I think it's, to get a comprehensive approach, it's worth the five, five months.
Councilmember Holheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, could you just speak on the priorities the committee wanted to emphasize with the new police chief?
Actually, that's, we're a little ahead, you're a little ahead of the process, right? The priorities in terms of what we're looking for in a police chief will be determined in this first phase after a number of community engagement opportunities. The community will help determine what the priorities are, what the profile will look like for the ideal candidate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further questions for the manager? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I did forget to mention, I think this company also gave us a one-year guarantee that if this didn't work out, we could do this process again, no cost.
That is correct.
Further discussion? I mean, excuse me, further questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I will relinquish the floor to, or recognize Vice Mayor Tuttle, as she was a member of this, asked for, for a motion, and then also recognize councilmember Johnson, if you would be so inclined for a second. So Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. I move that the city council approve the selection of public search, public sector search and consulting, Inc., to provide executive search services for chief of police, approve the contract, approve the necessary signatures, and approve the necessary budget adjustments.
Second.
Motion has been made by Vice Mayor Tuttle and seconded by councilmember Johnson. Clerk roll open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Approval of travel for Mayor Brandon Whipple, Vice Mayor Becky Tuttle, and councilmembers Brandon Johnson, Mike Holheisel, Brian Fry, and Maggie Ballard do attend the N L C City Summit and Capitol Hill Visit Washington, D.C., March 11th through 16th, 2022.
So I should admit that my wife has planned some really fun stuff for that time with the kids, so if there is a motion to cut me out of this, then please, someone can make it, that'd be great. Not, did not make the motion to approve the travel and the expenditures if there's no further discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk roll open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Looks like we're going to represent the city in Washington, D.C. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember appointments and comments.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Appointment-wise, I would like to reappoint Caleb Pack to the District One Advisory Board and Seth Windsor.
So we have two appointments from councilmember Johnson is, let's try to knock these appointments out first, if that's okay. Councilmember Ballard.
I'd like to appoint Lauren Clary for the Sustainability Board.
And councilmember Bluebog.
I'd like to reappoint Patrick Atkins to the Animal Control Advisory Board, and I'd like to reappoint the following DAB members, Wally Bell, Grant Delmar, Dalton Glasscock, June Johnson, Jonathan McRoy, Alex Martinez, Laura Rainwater, Rebecca Robertson, Doc Vaughn, and new member Becky Genick.
I make a motion to pass the appointments as they were stated. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk roll open a roll. Members cast the votes. Ever received seven yea votes, that motion does pass, and those appointments are made. Back on the comments, are there comments for the good of the group or the public? Councilmember Ballard.
I just wanted to remind everybody that this coming Monday from 12 to 1, filling in the gap, is passing out their food for different children, and Honor wanted me to make sure that I said that the kids have to be in the car to get food for them. So there's a couple of different locations, Colvin, Evergreen, Health Core, Oaklawn, and then Hayesville as well, and it's from 12 to 1 on Monday, the 14th, to pick up the food for school kids during spring break, so, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to shout out the Greater Wichita Partnership for hosting our District One Advisory Board last night. We had a great session, very welcoming, and we had our interim city manager join us as well, so, or not interim, assistant city manager join us, so thank you for that, and definitely I just want to shout out the partnership for their hospitality.
Further comments for the good of the group? If there are no more further comments, I do have a blue sheet, so I will move that the city council recess into executive session for 20 minutes to receive information on contractual issues pursuant to K S A 754319B2 for legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship for legal advice. The executive session is required to protect the attorney-client privilege and the public interest, so we will start this meeting at 10:15 for 20 minutes, so we will conclude or come back, report back to the chamber at 10:35.
We need a vote.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded by Vice Mayor Tuttle. Clerk roll open a roll. Members cast the vote. Ever received seven yea votes, the motion passes. We are in executive session at 10:15 to 10:35, which we'll meet back here. Thank you.